Good afternoon, Commissioner.
Hello there.
We got you up there before. It's a good evening. How's that?
Sounds good.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Please, first if I could ask everybody that's leaving, please do so quietly. And the record will reflect their signs held up for you guys too. So, you know, librarians weren't the only ones. Please, identify yourself and proceed.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Councilwoman Greenlee, Council President Clark, members of council. I am Catherine Ott Lovell, Commissioner of the Parks and Recreation Department. With me today are Susan Slosson, First Deputy Commissioner for Recreation Programs, Marissa Washington, our Deputy Commissioner for Administration, Aparna Palantino, Deputy Commissioner for Capital Infrastructure and Natural Lands, Susan Buck, Deputy Commissioner for Operations. It's a great pleasure to be here today for my first budget testimony. Can I continue? Okay.
Please, person. I thought you were finished already. I was going to say that was great. It was really short.
I would like to begin by thanking the staff at Parks and Recreation, many of whom are with us here today, for their extraordinary dedication to the department, our assets and programs, and the constituents we serve each day. I have been serving in this position for 96 illuminating days. I have spent much of that time meeting with programs and operations staff, visiting facilities, attending community meetings, and meeting with many of you. I've also put much thought and effort into building our new leadership team in the department, and I'm confident that the women sitting alongside me today will help build a department that is responsive, high-functioning, dynamic, and compassionate. We will put the needs of citizens first, and we will work to provide optimal service and a rewarding and meaningful experience for each and every Parks and Recreation user. I appear before you today to present our proposed operating budget for fiscal year 2017, which includes a general fund obligation of $57,669,81, and a grants revenue of $12,237,484. The FY '17 general fund budget reflects a decrease of $536,887 over FY '16 estimated obligations. The Class 100 request of $43,386,251 sustains the department's authorized level of 700 general fund full-time positions. $9,294,525 is proposed for Class 200, $2,637,805 in Class 300/400, and $2,314,500 in Class 500. We are so fortunate to have a Parks and Recreation system that is first and foremost beloved by our citizens. Our programs and facilities are part of the social fabric of our city and critical to the quality of life of residents of all ages, but most especially, our young people. We provide exemplary programs to thousands of young people annually, including after-school and summer camp, athletics, arts and culture, technology, and environmental education. We provide over 3 million meals to children annually, and through our new Farm Philly program, those same children are now food producers as well, growing over 1,000 pounds of fruits and vegetables at gardens in our facilities that are then distributed in their own communities. Our workforce development program continues to grow, and Parks and Recreation is currently the largest employer of seasonal jobs for young adults ages 14 to 24 in Philadelphia. This year, we contracted with Philadelphia Youth Network to support 1,600 children ages 14 to 18 through work-ready summer jobs. We also worked with the Center for Employment Opportunities to provide jobs to 90 returning citizens ages 18 to 24 who worked alongside our operations staff throughout our parks. In FY '17, we will launch our new career advancement project, an industry pipeline model designed to connect young adults to permanent careers in our department and beyond. Our parks and open spaces continue to draw national attention, with many new and exciting projects on the immediate horizon, including the transformation of Love Park, the extension of the Schuylkill Trail to Bartram's Mile, the Discovery Center in East Fairmount Park, the Centennial Commons in West Fairmount Park, the Reading Viaduct Rail Park, the Circuit Trails, and neighborhood park transformations such as Stinger Square, Wecaco, Wissonoming Park, Conestoga, and Smith Playgrounds. Major efforts will be launched this year to improve the core functions of our department's better care for our natural lands and facilities. The recently implemented Performa Work Order Management System has already enhanced our ability to respond to maintenance requests and ultimately will help us better manage our labor force. Likewise, our Standards and Inspections Program is enabling us to evaluate and score our basic care and maintenance efforts in our facilities, and includes a robust training program on sustainable practices for operations staff. We are using a new, high-resolution technology to inventory our dead and hazardous street trees for the first time, an initiative that will enable us to be proactive in our efforts to remove trees before citizens call them to our attention. The dedicated men and women serving Philadelphia Parks and Recreation represent various backgrounds and diversities. The Parks and Recreation executive staff are 78 percent women, 22 percent men, 44 percent African-American, 44 percent white, and 11 percent Asian. The full-time new hire breakdown for FY '16 is 42 percent female, 58 percent male, 45 percent minority, 55 percent white, and 12 percent bilingual. While there is so much great work happening in our department, over the past three months, I have been deeply struck by the need for significant capital improvements in our facilities. I am also saddened by the inequity that exists throughout our system and the acute difference of the condition of our facilities in certain communities versus others. It is our single greatest efficiency as a department, our most critical challenge, and our paramount opportunity. It has reinforced for me, every day for the past 96 days, the importance of Mayor Kenny's rebuild initiative. It presents more than just the opportunity to fix the leaky roofs, the missing swings, the broken windows, the torn-up fields, the crumbling sidewalks that all of you know too well. It is our chance to reinvest in what makes our residents most proud, what unites our neighborhoods, creates our leaders, changes lives. It is our chance to show our children that good enough is no longer good enough for them. I thank each of you for your careful consideration of the rebuild initiative and of our FY '17 operating budget. Should any council member wish to engage in further discussion on these matters, my staff and I are ready, willing, and able to meet with you at your convenience. Thank you for this opportunity to discuss our department with you today. I look forward to your questions. And in closing, let me congratulate and thank Susan Slosson for 29 years of service to the city of Philadelphia. She is retiring next month, and we will miss her dearly. Next month. This month.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And certainly you beat me to it, but I was going to certainly recognize Commissioner Slosson for all that she's done over the years for the city, from the police department to recreation, to Parks and Recreation. And I have to say, I see Barry Bessler back there. He is usually my contact when we have questions at Fairmount Park, and, you know, he somehow keeps taking my phone calls. I don't know. So, thank you. One question, and I know a couple other council members have questions. Page seven, you state the Special Projects Initiative. So, it's been functioning for over 30 months. The project team has completed over 102 work orders totaling $2.9 million and saving $3.4 million in capital funding. We'd like to hear about savings, but given that, are there plans to ramp up this program at all? What's the future, I guess, for the Special Projects Initiative?
Sure. Well, we love the program, and I have to give a huge kudos to Frank Fabey, who's our wonderful Director of Skilled Trades and Special Projects and Engineering and Magic. And so, a special thanks to Frank for his work on the Specials Capital Project. It's been a wonderful program. We have been able to do so much with it. I think we could certainly expand the program if given the resources, but it's really become not just a cost savings for the department and the city, but also a time saver. The amount of time that it would take to do some of these capital projects would be far, far more than the amount of time we're able to do by having our own skilled trade staff perform them. So, it's been able, we've been able to be really much more responsive in terms of completing some of these smaller capital projects while also saving an incredible amount of money for the city.
Okay. Thank you. All right, let me first recognize Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, ladies.
Good afternoon.
Well, as a Chair of Parks and Recreation, it's really been my pleasure to work with you all. And, you know, I just have had such a good working experience. We call you, you respond. You know, we're able to get things done. We're like-minded in the sense that, you know, this is not just a job by anyone that I've encountered in Parks and Recreation. This is really a mission, and it's about our children, about our young people in particular. And I just really want to thank you. I want to thank in particular Frank Fabey and for all of his hard work. You know, my constituents call me, and I call either Frank or Sue, and I just wanted to thank, I don't care what they say about you, Frank, I like you. You're all right with me. But I want to thank him for all of his hard work and being so responsive. And of course, to Sue Slosson, my girl, who, you know, I'm really just going to miss. I'm trying not to get emotional over here, but, you know, Sue is near and dear to my heart, and she has just been such a wonderful, wonderful person to work with.
Amen.
And so, I don't know what the city of Philadelphia is going to do without you. I really don't. As it was mentioned earlier, from your work with the police department, and now your work with Parks and Recreation for so long as Commissioner, and there's so many different roles, and again, I just want to say thank you, and my hat's off to you for all that you've done, because, you know, I can't imagine what our Parks and Recreation Department would look like if you had not been there at the table with a say and holding it down, as, you know, as the youngins say, "holding us down." And so, I just really wanted to thank you for all the work that you've done, and you'll surely be missed. So... And with that said, I probably have like one minute left. But I do want to ask just a couple of questions. And the first is that, you know, I have a new bill which I introduced a few weeks ago, which would be somewhat attached to the effort that we have planning to make spaces, you know, to rebuild our playgrounds and recreation centers. And my bill actually, what makes spaces much more intergenerational and family-friendly and disabled-friendly, friendly for disabled children and adults. Every playground that we've touched in the 8th District since I've been in council, we really worked to have those things at the forefront. And so, for every rec center or playground that we've touched, we've made sure that there was playground equipment that was not just for children who, you know, did not have developmental delays, but for those who did as well. So, whether you were on the autism spectrum or whatever it may be, you know, there were different colors and textures and things of that nature that resonate with children who have those delays. And so, you know, I got the idea actually from Councilwoman O'Neill's district, where he has a playground, I can't think of the name of it, it's one of a reroute, I believe. And, you know, it's a playground that looks like any other playground, but because of the colors and the textures, it really is a welcoming place for those who have those delays. And we've worked to try to get those in our district as well with every playground that we touched. So, you know, we'd like to see that go citywide, essentially, and that's what the bill would do. As we rebuild our playgrounds, we need to make sure that, you know, we write everybody in and make sure that people who have been left out, you know, have an opportunity to come in, and there's something there for them to do. A reporter asked me, "Well, is this about, you know, ADA?" And I said, "Well, yes and no. It's really not about ADA as much, because you can get into a rec center, but is there anything for you to do once you get inside?" And so, I really wanted to get your thoughts on that.
I'm going to let my colleague, Aparna Palantino, respond.
Councilwoman Bass, actually, thanks to your initiative...
Identify yourself, just for the record. I don't think you have yet. Yeah. Identify yourself.
Oh, sorry. Aparna Palantino, Deputy Commissioner of Parks and Recreation. Councilwoman Bass, actually, through your initiative several years ago, starting with some of the parks such as Vernon Park and Pleasant Playground, where you had asked for some of those measures to be incorporated, we actually took it upon ourselves to start implementing those measures at all of the playgrounds that we've designed in conjunction with Department of Public Property. So, thank you for that. And going forward, that's been initiative in spite of the bill, and we're actually glad to see it...
Oh, great.
...come in. But that's something we've taken upon ourselves to implement.
I'm glad to hear it. I'm glad to hear it. But in particular, one of the things that I've, I'd like to see more of, there are swings that are designed for children who may be wheelchair-bound...
Yes, we have.
...who a traditional swing probably would not be comfortable and would not work. And so, we'd like to see more of those. So, you know, if I have a child with special needs, I don't have to drive all the way out to a reroute, which is quite a way. So, I'm glad to hear that you're already doing that. Can you talk a little bit further about the adult exercise component to it? Because that's the other component that we've included in all of our play spaces, because it would be nice if, you know, I have a six-year-old daughter, so it would be nice if mommy could do a little something while, you know, my daughter is very close by, I can keep an eye on her, but, you know, I could work it out as well, as we promote exercise and healthy lifestyles in Philadelphia.
Absolutely. Actually, I know most of the projects we work on in conjunction with your office, we, you've asked us to install the adult fitness equipment. Subsequently, a lot of the other council members have also asked for that to be installed, and it's something that we've been trying, if space permits. We've also been using it at various locations in the parks. So, I think it's something going forward similar to the initiative for inclusive play, that we would also at least ensure that there's, if space permits, that there's some sort of adult facility at every playground as well.
Oh, good. Also, I didn't even need to do my bill. Y'all were doing it.
No, we were doing it, yes.
Okay. All right. And now, a few years ago, I also passed an ordinance that would require Parks and Recreation to update council members on criminal activities surrounding playgrounds and recreation centers. And I'm just wondering how is that? I know that we had a little bit of trouble getting it up off the ground, and it's something that as a district council member, if I see that I have a particular playground or rec center that is problematic, I may want to put additional resources there, additional programs. We do a lot of outside activities, particularly during the warm weather months throughout my district, and, you know, that would be a place that I would target so that we can bring back a positive vibe to the neighborhood and to the community. So, can you give us an update on that as well?
Sure. I'll let Susan Slosson speak.
Susan Slosson, First Deputy Commissioner for Programs and Recreation. Thank you so much for your kind words, Councilwoman Bass. Ditto. We did get that information for you initially. The police department would prefer to provide you with that information, because depending on what you're asking for specifically, they want to tailor it to that particular area and to whatever specific crimes, because it could be read differently. And so, if you provide me with the information, again, I'll forward it to the police department, and they'll give it back, but they would prefer to provide you with that information and not...
Yeah. That's fine with me. I don't have a preference in terms of who actually provides it, as long as we can get it, so we can act on it. So, do you need a, what do you need to...
Nothing. They're amenable to doing it. I'll do, I'll get the information, again, and let them know that it's for you, and I'm sure it won't be a problem.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I should, before I recognize Councilwoman Blackwell, I see Stephanie Craig head back there. Stephanie, thank you for all you've done in various ways with Fairmount Park. Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too would like to honor and thank Sue Slosson for all that she's done. And in fact, I will mention, because this all happened when she was Commissioner, I wanted to ask about the monies that were in the budget under even the last administration. For me, we've been talking about issues like Mill Creek and West Mill Creek, about the, you know, Lucian Blackwell Community Center supposed to happen. I've been fighting on that. I don't know whether it's been since 2000 or 2003, with this shared project with Mill Creek and the Lucian Blackwell. So, you know, I thought I'd mention these as backups, because all of this has been in. Friends of Malcolm X Park, that wasn't major, but still, issues like this, we've had a hard time. That and King Sessin even getting grass planted along the walkways. And Lars Simms Skate House in Cobbs Creek Park, we've been trying to get a sign, as you know. And, I mean, they still have that paper sign they made up. And we want to thank Stephanie Marsh and her sorority. They're going to help us with Clayborne Lewis Park, and Intech has helped us with several parks in the past. And I know that we're working on Cobbs Creek Center, so we want to check up on that and 48th and Woodland. So, we have those issues. And as you know, when we started with Lee Cultural Center, we had a hole, oh, I don't know, about this big. Now, the hole is, you can walk through it. We've been asking every year in all of these areas. I like it when we toured with the Commissioner, and we could see it, and we put the money in. The money just wasn't spent, but it's embarrassing. It looks like some big ghetto right there at 42nd and Havreford, because we haven't fixed it. Drexel was willing to do it, it would have cost us, I don't know, a thousand or two more, and, but we were told we could get it done more cheaply, but we haven't had anything done. And so, these are just a few of the things, you know, you keep it on the top of your mind. And now, we've been dealing with this since last summer, now we've got summer coming again. And there are things that were already budgeted. So, I'm asking if we can get these things done before the summer, or at least a status as to why we can't, because we had the money in under the last administration. And finally, if the President doesn't mind, I'd like to ask him about the Love Park that I love so much, and to ask what's happening with that. Thanks. Thank you. So, can you all give me a status on the Love Park?
Sure. So, thank you, Councilwoman. I will let Aparna talk to you specifically about the Lucian Blackwell Community Center and give an update on Love, but I think it would be great if we went on a tour again, you and I, and took a look at some of these sites again. And some of them are very easy fixes. I also met with the advisory council at Lars Simms. The sign should be an easy situation to fix. I agree, they need a new one.
Thank you. I'll make myself available when you're free.
Great. And also, agreed on the wall at Lee Cultural Center, we need to get that fixed as well. So, we'll certainly look into that and work with your office, and then we'll plan a tour for sometime this spring.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Blackwell, I'm pleased to announce actually that we've been working closely with PHA. We, they've selected a contractor and are ready to issue a notice to proceed for design to begin on the Lucian Blackwell Rec Center. So, that should go, design will start this month, and construction is expected to start by fall.
That's good. We introduced a bill to close off that street three times. So, it should be someplace in the system.
Yeah. So, that is moving. With regards to Mill Creek and West Mill Creek, I know we're working with public property on those, and both of those projects are ready to go into bid for construction to start towards the end of this year as well. So, those will be moving.
But the money's already been there.
Yes, it has.
So, when you said the end of the year...
They will, they will go through the public bid process, so they will go into procurement actually by next month. They'll go through the public bidding process, and then upon conformance of contracts, probably start in the fall or early winter. And to answer the question about Love Park, as you can see, they've started demolition. Investigative work is being done. As you know, part of that park sits over the parking garage, but the other part sits over SEPTA. So, we're working with SEPTA to address any issues, concerns that they have about, you know, the work that we're doing over the concourse area. So, we have to do it very carefully and very skillfully, so as to not cause any damage below. That project, once demolition's complete, will go into construction, is expected to be complete by May of next year for reopening.
What will it be? What will you construct?
It will be a park. It will still have some of the elements that were requested by the public as a whole. We had gone through an extensive process of community engagement, held several meetings with community, and based on the input received, one of the things, or some of the things that the community or the public as a whole had asked for was to maintain the Monumental Fountain. Not many cities in the world will throw that much water up in the air. So, they will have a fountain, they'll have another fountain feature, it will have a ser, much more green space, it will have gardens. The Love sculpture, of course, will be maintained. We will have places to continue the lunchtime activities that are there in the summer, concerts, the line dancing, all of that. One of the most important features that the new park will have is that it will be completely accessible. Currently, with the levels, you know, many people with certain disabilities can't get to every area, so the park will be completely accessible to all patrons. It will be a much more secure and safe park. The Welcome Center also will be renovated to provide public restrooms in the lower level with other activities on the first floor.
Thank you. That's one of my favorite places in all the city, because it is good for people, visitors to our city, people take pictures in front of the Love statue, people have lunch there. I was also okay with homeless people. I know nobody wants to hear that, but you all know I love my homeless people as well. So, people from all walks of life, all places, all races, everything, it's just the most exciting place. And I'm glad to hear that you'll do more, that you'll have restrooms, which will be monitored as part of the contract, I'm sure. And so, I'm glad to hear that it will be a great place. I remember once, when the late, great Lucian Blackwell was alive, and we were in Sweden, and we were jogging in the morning, of course, he was jogging, I was trying to walk, and I needed to use a restroom, and we were going down in the subway. And I said, "Lou, I'm not going there." And I fussed and fumed, but I couldn't help it, I had to go. And we went down there, everything was clean and spotless, and soap and tissues, and I was amazed that underground restrooms could be like that. Then I felt ashamed for doubting it. So, I'm glad that we'll have that, and that, Mr. President, they're going to maintain it, so they'll be nice and clean for people who need to use it. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And let me start by saying good afternoon to each of you, and welcome. I've got to start by lending my voice to the choir about you, Sue Slosson. I was talking to a group of University of Pennsylvania folks probably about three weeks ago, Councilwoman Blackwell, and we said, "The man." We were having a conversation about the man, and everybody knew about the man. They knew what the man was. Talk about this great man, this man-man-man. That's wonderful. And then someone said, "Well, you know, what's the Robin Hood Dell? What's the Robin Hood Dell?" No one knew about the Dell. And I told them to take a drive by the Dell and to look at the Dell, and they drove by it, and they could, they got out the car, they could see what they could see. And when they looked at that work, I said, "That's Sue Slosson. You helped to make sure that Philadelphians remembered the Dell and that it represented the same kind of quality that the people who patronize the Dell should be accustomed to." And that is a very strong legacy to leave here in the city of Philadelphia, and you should be proud to have been at the helm of making it happen, and I want you to know I won't ever forget it. Madam Commish, when you came and we had gotten started with these budget hearings, you know, for me, I'm a newcomer here, you know? My Councilwoman Blackwell and Council President Clark, they're all veterans, and, you know, they know their list, and they know their centers by heart, they know when the request for improvements were put. I mean, they know it, right? And I got here, and I was as green as green comes. And, you know, you can't make a decision without data and having the information. And it must have seemed like a perfect storm without, because I wanted it all right there, you know, immediately. And very meticulously, your office made sure that we received that information, so that when I went to each, several I was familiar with, obviously, because I had represented them as a legislator, but there were a whole lot I didn't know about. And your office provided me with the history of those, and that mattered to me. So, I needed to say thank you, because if you hadn't given it to me, this would have been a whole lot different right now. So, thank you so very much. Let me talk to you about something I care very deeply about, trees. I'm a lover of trees. I think trees are part of what lets you know when you leave the city and you walk into the burbs, people say, "What's the first thing that you notice that's different?" It is trees. And while I am a lover of trees, we have a lot that need to be pruned, right? And maintained. Talk to us, if you will, about the pruning and/or removal of dead and dangerous trees. What does our backlog look like? When someone calls, what's the wait?
Yeah. That's an excellent question, and I thank you very much for being a tree champion. We will remember that. It's great to, great to have... It's great to have that passion about it, because we feel very deeply about it as well. So we currently have a removal backlog of 2,784 trees. They have been on the list for up to three years, and with our current funding capacity, it would take about two years to get through the backlog. That said, there is some good news on the horizon, in that through our great leadership in the department, Stephanie Craighead and John Pillar in her department, our team has been working with special software called CycloMedia, which is a high-resolution, street-level imagery software, that they're actually able to go, for the first time ever, street by street through the city, sitting at a computer with seasonal employees, these wonderful young guys, who are going through and able to zoom in on trees on streets, and actually tell if they are dead and hazardous. See, for years, what we had to do is rely on citizens to call us and tell us when a tree, you know, when they thought a tree was dead or hazardous, and then we would send an arborist out to confirm that, and then it would be added to the list, and then we would, you know, have to take time due to the funding and capacity to remove the tree. But what this will allow us to do is, we've actually done two council districts so far, we did Councilwoman Bass and Councilman Squillan, we're working our way down the list to actually provide a map of all of the dead and hazardous trees in every district, and a dollar amount for what it would cost to remove those trees, which we could do in six months for each district. And I want to give a shout out to Councilwoman Bass, although she left, because she was our guinea pig, and the first person I sat down with last month when we had this information and gave her, you know, the map and the price, and she said, let's do it, and it was a big number, but it will not only help us be proactive in terms of removing, but it will also help us with that backlog, because many of those trees are on the backlog. It will also really help us in terms of storm events and emergency events, because, you know, when a storm event happens, some of those dead trees will be the first to fall. So if we're able to remove them, you know, then we won't have to go and clean up after a storm event, it'll really help on that end in terms of our operations and management of that.
How long do we think it'll take us to sort of get through the, get through the city?
That's a good question.
How long did it take you to do those two districts?
Yeah, it took a few months to do those three districts, so we're confident that we can probably get through the rest of the districts.
Actually, based on the timeframe for which we have the software, we have to complete the data collection by July. We lose the ability to use the software at almost no charge until July, so we've been working, and at this point, we're getting to almost seven days a week to be able to get all of this, because after July 1st, that software becomes incredibly expensive, and we'd rather not incur that cost.
You have to see these two guys who sit at their computer, I just went and congratulated them after our meeting with Councilwoman Bass, because it's a thankless job of sitting at this computer and going through, you know, it's like a Google Maps, you know, it's like a Google Maps on speed, and they just go through and click, and they have to zoom in on the tree, and they have to determine it, and then our arborists will go out to confirm, you know, that, but eventually, if we were able to secure the capital dollars from each council member, then we can send contractors out, you know, with that targeted list of trees to remove them. So there is hope on the horizon.
So let me, on behalf of my fellow district council members who are not here, say if July is the time, whatever you have to do in order to get those two guys some help, so that each district council person you're sitting down with, and they have to make those same decisions about getting that done, please do everything that you can do so that the end of July, when we no longer have access to it, we're not saying that there was a section of the city that got left behind.
That's right.
Because if all neighborhoods matter, you know, all neighborhoods should be able to benefit from the technology, so I'm just, you did, that's exciting, and that's good news to be able to share with our constituents. Let me ask you a question about this Key Spots Computer Centers.
Yes.
Are there plans to make more Key Spot Community Centers? We don't have any located in the ninth.
Yeah.
What does it take? How much does it cost? What's the state of that?
Yeah, that's, you know, I appreciate that. I think the Key Spots is a wonderful program, I want to thank Ben Bernstein, who runs that program. It's just been a wonderful partnership with OIT. We currently have 19 Key Spots, it's not enough. We have 19 Key Spots, and then we have five other staffed computing centers in the system, and then approximately 17 other computer centers that are unstaffed in recreation centers. But the key thing about Key Spots is that they're staffed, and there's someone there two days a week, 15 hours a week, could be two days, could be three days, depending on the site, who is working, you know, has that center open, is troubleshooting issues with the machines, you know, is working with citizens when they come in and want to do a resume, or look up college scholarships, or whatever it might be, there's a resource there. And so that's why Key Spots really work, because there's staffing as well as the computers. And I am happy to say that I just learned today that OIT has agreed to replace all the computers in the Key Spots, because at this point, they're about five years old, so there's a real need to replace those computers. In terms of expanding the program, that is something we would love to look into, I can get you the information about how much it would be, I don't have that off the top of my head, how much it would be to expand the program and to include it in more centers. I know when Kevin Hart came and donated those computers, it enabled us to fill out some more of those slots, those were added to a lot of our rec centers.
So help me just, and Mr. Chairman, if you will grant me the latitude, thank you so much. So one, so how were the existing 19, they were selected from within the department?
Yeah, that's a good question, I'm not sure about that, I think, yeah, Susan might have that information.
Aparna, you should stay there, Susan.
Yeah.
Susan Slosson, Councilwoman Parker, there was an opportunity to put in for a federal grant under President Obama, and they were specific to communities where the poverty level was really high, and we had to present information to determine whether or not we could choose certain facilities, and unfortunately, your particular neighborhood did not, because one of the things that I always try to do is to make sure I can put whatever we're trying to do, and at least, at least one in each council person's district, yours did not fall under the criteria. They were looking for neighborhoods that young people would not be able to go anywhere in the neighborhood and find a computer. So we had to specifically look for neighborhoods that were extremely poor, where there weren't libraries really close, and that's how they were identified.
I'm going to get you, woman. Talking to my Councilwoman Janie from Chaney over here, I apologize.
And that's how they were identified, and so we went throughout the district, and throughout, throughout all of the districts, and we identified specific neighborhoods where it fell under the criteria that the grant pointed out.
Well, so let me just say, so one, I think they're fantastic, and I think they're great. I get that you were probably required to use the federal, if it was a federal grant, then there were the federal poverty lines, and I understand that, but Council President, I'm glad you are sitting here, and you hear this message, because once again, it reaffirms, you know, a tickle in my throat that I have about this idea that people who make a nickel over the guideline are not eligible for participation. Actively engaged citizens, you know, they're paying taxes, and we should find a way to help all of those in need, because there, but for the grace of God, go each of us.
Absolutely.
But for those people who are just, they make a nickel above, they have a pension, they just happen to work, right? And it's as if when you talk to them, they don't find themselves being eligible for some of the awesome programs that are offered in the city of Philadelphia. And so as we move forward, and if we can potentially have a discussion about trying to ensure that there is no neighborhood that is not benefiting, because although you can have a neighborhood that has a library that may have access, the library is usually open when the rec, and the rec center is open, but the library is closed, and that rec center is open for programming.
Yes.
And our kids are using that rec center, where we get ready to, for example, lose Azura, who is our, I don't, I'm happy that she is being promoted, I will tell you that I am, I'm not so sure how I'm really feeling about her leaving, because we depend on her, you know, so much, but in areas like that, where there is a mix, you know, if we don't find a way to help stem the tide now, things can evolve and take a turn for the worse. So I would clearly like to work with you on trying to establish some other key spots, so if there's anything that we can do to be helpful, and that tree pruning list, I had to say it on the record, because I couldn't go out to another town hall meeting without being able to tell my constituents that I made sure that tree pruning and the removal of dead and dangerous trees were on the list.
We'll do your district next, I promise.
All right. And listen, and I want you to know-
You just got bumped up.
The council president will tell you, I'll come find you. Okay, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Real quick, Special Projects Initiative, does that incorporate only Department of Recreation employees, or is it also public property employees?
It's only our parks and recreational places.
Only Department of Rec. How many people are in that workforce?
Twenty. Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight? All of those individuals have a specific trade slash skill?
Yes.
And, meaning that they're, are they like journeymen?
They might be roofers, they might be electricians, they might be classers.
You had to say yes, because they can't take it.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. So basically, there are union carpenters?
Correct.
Yes, they are.
Roofers, and all of that.
Yes.
And right now, is there limitations on what, how much work, or is the level of capital work that they can do?
So, not in monetary value, but in the extent of the work. So for example, if you have a roof that's leaking, if it requires a patch, or it's not a very large roof, our Special Projects can do it, if it's a very large roof and you require manufacturer's warranty for the product, you have to be a certified installer, so that-
Certified installer?
Yes.
And the city of Philadelphia is not a certified installer?
No, there's certain contractors that are pre-qualified by various manufacturers to do certain work, so while we can do it, we wouldn't be able to, certain warranties and things like that, we would not be eligible for. But that's, again, sorry.
Wouldn't, if we're the workforce, aren't we the warrant, guarantee?
No, so on a roof, for example, the simplest, when you go to a manufacturer, they have certain details you have to follow, and they will come-
No, but I'm saying if we do the roof, it's our building, and wouldn't we guarantee the work?
We could guarantee the labor, the material, if there's a deficiency found later, which does happen in the material itself, for example, the adhesion's not there, or the product that the manufacturer may have supplied was defective, if we don't use a certified installer, then they wouldn't give us that 20-year warranty on the roof.
Because of the material?
Right.
And the material is installed with labor, a labor force, that is what, not what? Because you said they're union.
They're not certified installers. We can look into if a manufacturer would review our installation procedures and give us a warranty. I'm not 100% certain that they would do that, but we can look into that, because this program's been very successful, and just based on the savings that we've been able to achieve over the past three years, I think it's a worthwhile next step to do that, to see if we're able to expand our workforce and get them the training that they need to be able to get these certifications. I think we-
I think this is a case of where we don't know.
Probably we can't, but-
If you have, you have a certified union roofer, and they install material, I don't know how, just because we don't belong to a private company.
And all companies aren't certified by all manufacturers, that does happen. We've been through some bad roofs ourselves with qualified installers, but, so we would, we have to reach out to the manufacturers and see if they'd be willing.
Same thing with plumbing, because we have, assuming we have plumbers on?
Plumbing is not as much of a problem, most of the plumbing installations can be done ourselves. The only other large installation that may pose some problems is the HVAC, the Heating, Ventilation, Air Conditioning.
Do we have HVAC?
So we can do-
Employees?
We do, we do, so-
So we basically have all of the trades in-house?
Yes, we do. The only thing that we could not currently do ourselves is installation of control systems, the very complicated, complex-
Which one, I'm sorry?
The HVAC control systems.
Okay.
But system installations we can do. Our guys, Frank's guys do them all the time.
Okay. And I'm assuming, based on the, they're all in District Council 33, employees?
Yes.
And they're all city employees, so it's probably likely that it's a pretty diverse workforce? Yes, no? I mean Frank, you know.
Yes, it is, it's a diverse workforce.
All right, okay. So, we all know that there's this issue about rebuild, and one of the most significant issues to me is the lack of diversity with respects to the current capital programs and projects outside of the city's workforce. So would it make any sense to entertain increasing the city's capacity as it relates to capital projects? So one, we can get it done, two, we can deal with the workforce issues?
It would, absolutely.
I think that's a really interesting idea, and we would, we could certainly investigate it as part of the rebuild initiative.
Okay.
I think we're really proud of the skilled trades workforce, and agree that we should use whatever class we have.
All right, I'm going to leave it at that, and give some people some time to think, they may not necessarily be in this room. Okay, thank you, thank you very much for your testimony, there'll be no other questions, we're good.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
No, no, council, there've been, this committee will stand in recess until Thursday, May 3rd, 2016, at 10:00 a.m., at which time we will reconvene, Room 400. Thank you all very much.